Okay, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:07. This is our regular monthly Hartland School District Board meeting. And we'll get started. So we'll start with any changes or additions to the agenda.
Angie.
My addition to the agenda is a presentation on the school parent and family engagement procedure.
Okay. Parents.
Set discussion?
Yeah, I'm putting it under discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, should I move you higher? Do you wanna stick around? Or you want to stretch a few higher on the agenda?
That would be helpful if you can, although I have until 8:30.
Okay.
We're not going anywhere till 8:30.
Okay, there we go. So we'll, if we run up against time constraints, hopefully we will.
We will not.
Okay, okay, any other changes or additions?
Yes, do you want to put under items for action? Setting a board retreat date?
Yes.
So that we can get that on the books?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to approval of the minutes. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of April 4. Moved by Beth, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Hannah, okay. I write these down just in case we lose them later. Okay, is there any discussion of the minutes? Guys did a great job with that.
It was very nerve wracking. But we did make it through fast.
I only got a few texts on the airplane. Okay, with no further discussion, I'll move to vote. And since we're mostly remote-ish, we'll do a roll call. Beth, hi. Aline.
Hi.
Hannah.
Hi.
And I'm going to abstain since I was not there. So that was 3:0 to 1. Okay, the minutes have passed. Public participation or announcements? Public that would like to participate? No? Okay, can you guys hear me okay? Because I think I have to project all the way to Christine's.
Yep, we can hear you.
It's a, we can hear you, it's a little quieter, definitely project.
You want me to run some in the middle?
If you want to run the sound.
Yeah, like maybe all on the air?
Turn it, yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay, we're gonna switch it to my microphone. Because I'm in the middle of the room. So, okay, hopefully it's a good one.
It sounds good.
I didn't hear anything on public participation or announcements. So we're gonna move on to student presentation of learning. And Nikki, if it's right with you, was it built within the administrative reports? Do you want me to?
You can start the administration.
Yep, yep, okay. And Michael or someone on there, can you see that all right? I just wanna be sure.
I hear things here.
Oh, you can, we're good. That works. Some fun highlights, we had a community dinner last Thursday, an empty bowl. It was fantastic, huge kudos to Anne Stebing, who really worked so incredibly hard at putting it together. And it was a huge success. We had musicians playing, kiddos enjoying, having a good time. And then one of the other pictures in the upper right-hand corner, myself, a couple of the school counselors, took a good portion of the eighth graders to the Hartford Tech Center. And it was amazing, they had so much fun. We walked through all the different aspects, this one here, we walked through, there's, I didn't know a lot about the Hartford Tech Center before going, it's, it's really fantastic. I was saying to Alina earlier, there's two separate car-related sections. This one is the one that's more of like upkeep, you know, changing the oil, that type of car work, automotive work. And then next door in the classroom, the next classroom next door is they bought a kit to build like a souped-up truck kind of thing, that their plan is to sell, which is really cool.
That's really cool.
And then we got on the bus and then went to a home that they're finishing, the construction class. And it's like 90% finished right now, so we were able to like walk through the entire home. It was beautiful. Oh my gosh, it was, it was a blast. And they sell it, they sell it, yep, it's going on the market, they said around June, they're planning on putting it on the market.
That's awesome.
Which is, yeah, really fantastic.
I know the kids enjoyed it too.
Yeah, it really, it was a blast, it really was.
It's an amazing place.
Yeah, it just, it was, there was one student in particular really stuck out to me because he was unsure. Hey, hello. He was unsure around other parts, it got to the automotive part, and you could see his face light up. Like, it was like speaking to him almost, it was incredible. To the point where the person walking us around was like, wow, you really found your, the spot that you love, right? And he's like, yep, this is what I wanna do. So it was just, it was really, really incredible.
That's really cool.
Yep. Student reps on the board, we didn't have any until when I shared this presentation yesterday, we did not have any. Now, we have one, which is great.
That's awesome.
So that person is gonna work through the process, so it's very likely that person will end up with us. In the near future, my assumption would be probably at the June board meeting, we'll have someone that is interested. Which is really exciting.
That's awesome.
Really, really exciting.
Cool. And then grade of that student?
Seven grade.
Seven grade, so more people per year.
Which is really fantastic.
Yes.
I wanted to just circle back on the playground, I'm still going back and forth with the company. Once I have a little bit more, something more formal, my thought is, they said that they'd be trying to go into the board and doing a really nice presentation. I think that would be a great idea, once we get to that point. So I've got that in the back burner.
Okay.
Something worth, it's important to work on.
I'm trying to remember if I imagined this, or did you find grants?
That's what I'm gonna try to look into. I would imagine some exist, so we just have to do a little bit digging. I did reach out to Katie Ahern, thinking that she might have some knowledge to be given there of accessibility and funding sources where that comes from. And she was gonna look into that also.
Okay, cool.
And I did, I couldn't link it here, because it was a PDF, so it made it a little tricky in linking it here. But I did email out to the board yesterday, that PDF of sample MRA questions. And so if we wanna bring it back next month, or thoughts? I know Heather, it was, this was related to that pulse check idea that you were talking about. I don't know if some of the questions kinda spoke to what you were getting at or not. I think, I think some of them did, so I think it's a good place to start. Okay, okay. Does that make sense? And Christine, do you think, I don't know if this is more at the individual district level or SU, that we bring back now that we've done some of that, those surveys with staff, if we bring back that data? Am I right? Yeah, oh yeah, it's public. Yeah, yeah, so maybe in June, then we, I can put that on the June list, and we can bring back some of that. Okay. I think, should we have it? Okay, perfect. And then Heather, maybe that, it makes sense, once we look at that, that data, then if we decide that we want something additional, we could think about it. Or potentially this gets at the information that we're looking to get. Did the staff take the survey already? Yes, okay. Yep, yes. Okay. And we have a student report, the next video. Actually, maybe what makes the most sense is if I take over the sound? Yep. Does that break, does that make the most sense? Yep. mute. And then, go back. Thinking about. I don't know. Yep, also thinking.
Okay, um. Social Justice for Schools by Livy Roberts. What is social justice for schools? Well, social justice for schools is equality for all students, and to make the students and staff feel valued and safe in their schools, physically and mentally. Educators must do everything in their power to ensure social justice in classrooms. Here are just a few of the many examples of social justice issues in schools and outside of schools. Racism, mistreatment of the LGBTQ plus community, and sexism. Students in poorly funded schools who don't have the resources or opportunities to create a well-rounded education that students need to be access, to be successful in life. Quotes from Jesse Hagopien. The bold and courageous work of standing up to racism is hard, and this award gives recognition for those with the courage to do it. I wanted to create a space and an awareness that if you step forward for social justice, you will be lifted up in the community and by mentors who will support your work. This is said by Jesse Hagopien. He makes it his mission to create a safe space to step forward for social justice and have a community to talk to and to be supported by. Facts. The US ranks 23rd in high school graduation rate among rich nations of the world. And the US ranked first in 1970. 14% of the schools in the US exceed capacity. Less than 50% of the schools who graduate high school in the US cannot proficiently read or complete math equations. A student living in poverty is 13 times less likely to graduate high school on time. Of student dropouts, nearly 60% will go to prison at some point in their life. High schools are not preparing kids with the right skills and knowledge necessary to excel after graduation. Only 25% of high school students are ready to graduate from high school and move on in their life. More facts. 14% of new teachers resign by the end of their first year. 33% leave within their first three years, and almost 50% leave by their fifth year. The unemployment rate for college-educated black people is twice that of white people. 25% of black freshmen who start public high school don't graduate with a regular diploma in four years. Conclusion. We need to change our schools for the better. If we see any of these things happening, racism, sexism, poverty, we need to do something about it. We need to help the people who are experiencing this, and we need to learn to stand up for ourselves and other people. The people who are doing this need to understand that it is not okay. And this, these are the sources I used.
Perfect. Fantastic. I know that was incredible. Michael, I don't know if you wanted to speak to a little bit of what some of the students do. This was one sampling of what they did. Would you wanna speak a little to, to what the assignment was?
Sure, I'm cleaning my garage still, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I called you on the fly, I should've told you, I'm sorry.
No, it's all good. So ideally, this is an IDL that we have. After Stacy had left, I acquired her students, which put me in a bind to literally come up with an IDL on the fly. So the first group that I had, we just kinda did board games, because we only had a couple weeks. But this group, I actually had time to put together a good IDL. So there, the, the topic was social justice, which was really for them to look up social injustices and find ways that they can improve it depending upon. And I let them know that their audience, I'm sorry, I let them know that their audience had to go from the school board up to the president. And so students picked who their audience would be and what their topic would be, and then they researched it. She just happened to finish it up that day, to be able to get it ready for today. But it ranges anywhere from, we have students that are doing the differences when it comes to medical care and poverty. We have other students that are looking at how our state funding and federal funding reflects still a little bit when it comes to how we passed as a school. And why does that matter? How is it that some schools get, still get a little bit more funding if they're passing state tests and others aren't? And why aren't we doing that? So it's been really neat to see students that truly were able to find a topic that they wanted to dig into and learn about, and then do that. And their goal was that they had to do history about it, they had to have it as a presentation, and that they needed to show some type of graphical, or at least give some statistical data about it. So it incorporated several different spheres of our classes. And I've just been really impressed. It's been one of those where a lot of students that struggle in other class areas have really been performing at a level that I thought that they could, because they were able to find something that they were passionate about, and then find how to do it, and research it, and then be held accountable for it. So it's been really neat.
Thank you, Michael, appreciate it.
Yep.
And, oops, again. There we go. We do have four resignations for the board tonight. The first is McKenna Wilkinson, who's currently a sixth-grade teacher. Mr. Butts, who is just speaking, currently seventh and eighth-grade math teacher. Ms. Towne, for music, and Emily Fugue, who's currently a kindergarten teacher. We will all certainly miss all four of them. They all brought incredible strengths to our building.
And energy.
And energy, yeah, all of them, which is, so those are the. Yeah, we're working, on the next slides, we're working really diligently, some are, we're almost to the tail end of filling some. And we do have a few to bring to you. The first is Abigail Garafa, as a K, she'll be end up being a K-5 teacher. And she's, I tried to give you a little bit of background on each person, I don't know if that's helpful or not, I can tweak it for what you wanna see. She's got an undergraduate in sustainable food and farming from UMass. She attended the Spark Institute for Teacher Education. And she has experience both as a support staff member, as well as currently a special educator. And she'll be stepping in as a classroom teacher for next year, pending board approval. Which is, you were, the interview team was really, really excited to, to experience her interview, and were really excited to offer the position, which she accepted, which is really fantastic.
And it's nice to, because I know we try to integrate special education into the classroom setting, that's just so nice.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, she, yeah, she's currently a special educator and is realizing that her passion really lies within the classroom. So it's, yeah, it's wonderful. The second is Elizabeth Dow. We would have her fill one of the six or eight ELA teacher positions. She's got her degree from California State University San Marcos, and she has 20-plus years of experience in a wide variety of areas, and it's just a sampling. She's done fifth grade, she's in ELA, social studies, Spanish. I think she's gonna be a really, really well-rounded, very knowledgeable and experienced educator that's gonna join the team, which is incredible. Yeah, she was also, the interview committee was really floored by her and what we think that she can help bring to the middle school, which is amazing. And the third, sitting over here, Ms. Alina Martis. It does, it needs board approval. We did, we did open the position and interview, and the, the committee really loved Alina. I can attest to that as well. She is currently our interim assistant principal and works really hard at building communities within the entire building, students, staff, you name it. She's working incredibly hard at doing that. I am very lucky to be able to partner with her, so it would be my pleasure to have her appointed by the board this evening. So those are the three appointments that we have for you.
Awesome, okay. Go back a slide.
Absolutely, yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Are we on the resignation part? Are we asking people, is there an exit interview?
There is an exit interview opportunity if they, if they so choose, yes.
Okay, and do we get to learn about any of this, or?
It's done through HR, Tina does it, and she's, she compiles the information, so there'll be a report. If you want specific information on these particular individuals, I can ask her. Yeah.
Too many go to the next one? Or the other, Alina? Okay, okay, perfect.
I know her.
Right, we know her.
I can remember. And I'm excited to say that all the dominoes have now fallen.
Yes. Very exciting.
Her administration is sad. Maybe self devotes, nevermind.
Then I'll hopefully should be said, yes. Some upcoming events, on Thursday, we've got the commuter dinner and community session that was at Weathersfield this time. We've gone back and forth, the last one was here, this one is at Weathersfield. You know, I didn't put the time, what time is it, Christine?
It starts at 5:30 with dinner, and the session is from 6:00 to 7:30.
What's for dinner?
Oh, gosh. Good question.
I don't know, Brian's in charge of that. It's always delicious, what is it?
What is it?
I think I know, I think you're relating for television.
All right. All right.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Yeah, it'll be great, yep. And what was it, the last time we were there, there was like, I don't think it was the Brussels sprouts that I think were really good, but it was something.
Roasted vegetables, I think.
Yeah, it was something that was really, I remember leaving like, oh man, that was so good. We've got an early release on Friday, and our kindergarten registration is the 19th. And we did send out a memo to families this week, but that does mean the current kindergarteners will not have school that day.
I've got a person, I've got two personal pages and a student teacher.
There you go. All right.
Oh, what's mine? I linked my report, you have access to it, I'm not gonna deliver it again, but I did pull one really exciting piece of information out of it to share with the full board tonight, yeah. Our, our educational equity audit is complete, and we've been working with, as you know, we've been working with inside education on it. We had a preliminary meeting with them to go over the general findings. And we are planning with our consultant, Mary Gannon, how to roll that information out. We're gonna start with, our hope is, at each individual board retreat, we'll do a little bit of unpacking, and Mary will come to those. And then we have planned with Mary how we're gonna roll it out with staff next year, over the course of the year. Because we, we do feel like it needs to be done at the building level. So Angie and I have been working with Mary on those dates and planning out the whole year, so that's exciting. And the other really exciting news is we did hire a coordinator of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Her name is Tracy Price, she's coming from Portland, Oregon. She has extensive experience in this work, so we're very fortunate. And she was definitely, or other schools in Vermont competing for her, I heard, and we were lucky to get her, so. She's coming, she's, she's got, she, she's been, she's worked in education, but she's also worked as a senior equity and inclusion consultant for the Center for Equity and Inclusion. She's worked as a consultant at multicultural collaborative. She's worked at the Center for Diversity in the Environment, I mean, she has a wealth of experience. So we're very, very excited and happy that she's joining us. She'll be starting midsummer, they have to move across country, so I'm giving her a little flexibility, so. And she was approved at the board meeting, S E board meeting this month, so. It's a done deal, and that's all I'm sharing tonight, so I'll take questions or, or any feedback from the board. If there's none, that's okay. That's good. Oh, that was it?
That was it.
Okay, so I think, Angie, it's you.
Yes.
Because I put you under, I didn't put you under items for discussion, I put you under things for.
Angie, do you want me to take my mic off, because we're across the room? Do you wanna?
That would probably be better.
Is that it? I'll turn my speaker on too, so if anybody has any questions. So before I present my screen, the purpose of this evening's presentation, I am Angie Ladue, I am the Director of Curriculum, and I'm also the Federal Grants Manager. We have had a federal grant monitoring this year, which is the first time in the six years that I have been a grant manager. So we are learning a lot. And one of the things that we're learning about is how to better engage our parents and families. Heartland Elementary School does operate a school-wide program. And that means you receive Title I funds that you can use to benefit all students. It's about raising the program for all kids, which does prove to support the kids who are most at risk of not meeting the standards on state assessments and local assessments. So let me share my screen here. What I want to do is point you to where you can get additional information. So the first screen that you're going to see is the WSESU website. And if you go to Heartland Elementary School webpage, under information, there is a Heartland Elementary School Federal Grants Program page. That page is where you find information about tonight's presentation. Right here is the slideshow, it's a little slow, okay? The slideshow will show up right there, and then a comment form. Because what we would like to do is to put, once this recording of this meeting is available, I am going to add it to this webpage, so that we can share this information with our parents and get some comments back, get some comments about the engagement procedures that we have devised. So if you scroll down even further, you can find the Heartland Elementary School Schoolwide Plan. This little button up here in the corner will let you enlarge that view, so you could read it. I have looked at this on a phone, it is doable on a phone, but it is still small, so. Then this is the presentation that happened the other evening, last week, during the school community dinner. There was a Title I presentation. We will be having another presentation in the fall, and I will be talking to you more about presentations. There is a comment form here about that presentation, and we welcome your comments about anything that you heard about on that school-wide plan. The next, I'm going to just close out of this. And go to my slideshow. Okay, we're all good. It's good that I can see Heather's screen right there. Okay. "In order to provide all children with a significant opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education, and to close educational gaps, Heartland Elementary School receives Title I Part A funds." And basically, what I'm doing is reading to you from the text that is on the plan itself, where I showed you how you can find that plan. "Therefore, in accordance with Section 1116B of Every Student Succeeds Act, Heartland Elementary School will develop with the parents and family members of participating students, in this case, that's all students, because Heartland is a school-wide program school, a written parent and family engagement procedure. This procedure will outline how this school will involve parents and family members in procedure development and build capacity for parent and family engagement in order to improve student academic achievement. Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School will hold an annual meeting at a convenient time, always convenient when it's during a community dinner, to which all parents of participating children shall be invited and encouraged to attend. To inform parents of the school's participation in Title I, to explain the Title I requirements under ESSA, and to inform parents of their right to be involved, the Heartland Elementary School agrees to take the following actions. Title I information session for this year, for the school year 2023, occurred last April 27th, and it will occur again in September, based on, we will be using data from assessments at the end of this year, to inform our plan. The way that we informed our parents of this event was that we sent it, sent out notice in the weekly school newsletters, their staff weekly updates. A flyer for the event was created and shared out on our Facebook page and on the school website. A final school email blast was sent out the week of the event, and K-5 students received a hard copy of the invitation in their bag to bring, in their take-home bag. So the feedback plan, we received anecdotal feedback at the end of the event. We followed up with a brief survey in May 2023, that's what you saw on the webpage. And the input will be analyzed and used to plan the fall welcome-back event. It will inform the school-wide plan. Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary, I'm sorry, Heartland Elementary School agrees to offer a flexible number of meetings, such as meetings in the morning or evening, and may use Title I funds to provide transportation, childcare, or home visits as related to parental involvement. How we're going to do this is we offer four community meals across the school year. "How we're going to do this is we offer four community meals across the school year. Community meals are for all family and community members. They include children as part of the event. Parent and teacher conferences are held twice a year in November and March. A variety of meeting times are offered in order to accommodate parent and family needs. And we also offer in-person and virtual options as needed. Childcare will be provided by existing staff based on needs. So depending on the event and the availability of childcare, we can offer that to encourage more parents and families to, um, come out." "So how we involve parents. Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School agrees to involve parents in an organized, ongoing and timely way in the planning, review and improvement of Title I programs in the following ways. Planning sessions for events will be advertised at least two weeks in advance and in a variety of media, newsletters, social media, website, listserv, et cetera. And parents are invited to attend and participate. Feedback will be invited through school surveys, school board meetings, recordings on the website with feedback forms, parent-teacher conferences and direct email. And I know that our administrators are always available for any feedback that you might have." Sorry, I duplicated that one. "Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School agrees to offer a flexible number of meetings, such as meetings in the morning or evening, and may use Title I funds to provide transportation." Is this a repeat? Because it feels like a repeat. Sorry. I copied and pasted, um, to, so this is parental involvement and school parent and family engagement policy and school-wide program plan. So this is how, as a parent or family member, you can be involved in the development of the plan. Title I Information Nights are held twice a year as in-person events. That's a fall information session and then a spring celebration session. Title I information is shared via the school website, newsletters, and then also it's in the student and family handbook. Parents and families will be surveyed during and after the event. Anecdotal feedback will be noted and documented for the school team to respond to. Title I nights with community dinners are held in September and March. Two more community dinners, up to two more community dinners. It might be one, a literacy math night combined, or it could be a math and literacy night. It may or may not involve a community dinner because we really have to go with the availability of our food program staff to help us do that in late fall and late May. Heartland provides parents the following. Planning sessions for events will be advertised at least two weeks in advance. And there is a lot of repetition in this. So it's just telling you how we will let you know about things that are happening. Feedback will be invited through the school surveys, school board, um, meetings and recordings, as well as the parent-teacher conferences and direct email. Opportunities for regular meetings for parents to make suggestions and participate in decisions related to the education of their children and responses to these suggestions as soon as practicable possible. The school agrees to provide these in the following ways: school newsletters, website, parent-family engagement evenings. Principals and staff will know parental feedback during team meetings and share with building administrators as needed. Parent suggestion box, the principal email and the teacher email. I'm a little confused. I'm so sorry. Uh, timely information about the Title I programs and a description and explanation of the curriculum in use at the school, the forms of academic assessment that are used and the achievement levels of the challenging state academic standards. I think my notes are a little off, so I will go back and fix that on the PDF file, file, um, tomorrow so that it's accurate on the website. My apologies. So Heartland Elementary School agrees to take the following actions to submit any parent comments about the school-wide program plan when the school makes the plan available to the LEA. That is the SU. If the school-wide program plan is not satisfactory to the parents of participating children, this is just how you would get feedback if you'd, um, found something in the plan that didn't, you didn't think met the needs of children. You do this through complaints and concerns that are received will be responded to as needed, um, via personal communication by the school administrator or a person assigned. Um, any widely enacted changes will be explained in school newsletters. School board meetings are another avenue for parent concerns to be shared and responded to. "Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School agrees to take the following actions to jointly develop with participating parents a school-parent compact." There is a school, um, home compact currently in the student handbook. We just haven't reviewed it in several years. And that review is something that, um, that we are supposed to do under Title I. It would be done, but that review that would be developed with participating parents, that's a, a school-parent compact outlining, sorry, that was very, outlining how parents, school staff and students will share the responsibility for improved student academic achievement. The school-parent compact, called the Homeschool Compact, in the student handbook will be reviewed during the fall Title I Information Session. The Homeschool Compact appears in the student family handbook disseminated to each family prior to the start of the school year or in the first week of school via school website link and newsletter. That school, um, handbook is up to, it's a live document. So if we needed to update it in real time, it updates on the website in real time. Information about the Title I Information Session will be on the school calendar for September 2024. Information will include an overview of the information that will be shared, discussed, including the school-wide plan and the Homeschool Compact. Parents and families will be invited to attend the session for live feedback question and answer session. The session will be recorded and posted to the school website with a Google feedback form. This information will appear in school newsletters for up to two weeks following the event. "Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School agrees to take the following actions to provide opportunities for the informed participation of parents and family members, including providing information and school reports required under Section 1111 in a format and language that parents can understand. This includes offering translation services prior to the event for parents of ELL students, that's English language learners, to provide parents with written information in their chosen language before, during and after an event." "This section, I'm going to talk about how we build capacity for involvement to ensure effective involvement of parents and support and support a partnership between the school, parents and the community in order to improve student achievement. Heartland Elementary School will use the following strategies. "Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School will provide assistance to parents of children served by the school in understanding the following topics. The challenging state academic standards, state and local academic assessments, Title I Part A requirements, how to monitor your child's progress and how to work with educators to improve their child's achievement." "The school agrees to take the following actions in order to provide this assistance. Information will be shared in the following forms: information in printed and electronic form. Parents can request more information from the school principal or school assistant principal, and I think I should ask here, also their child's classroom teacher or advisor can provide information or at least point you in the right direction." "Per ESSA, Heartland, Heartland Elementary School agrees to provide materials and training such as literacy and technology workshops as appropriate to help parents work with their children to improve their children's achievement. School community dinners will pair with annual open house Title I Information Night, an annual literacy event and/or an annual math event, and annual spring celebration event. "Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School agrees to educate its teachers, specialized instructional support personnel, principals and other school leaders and other staff with the assistance of parents in the following areas. The value of contributions of parents, how to reach out to, communicate with and work with parents as equal partners, how to implement and coordinate parent programs and how to build ties between parents and school. The school agrees to take the following actions to provide this support. Schedule training sessions during school staff meetings, provide materials supporting the implementation of the ideas above, promote and support the parent-teacher organization in, to encourage parent and teacher participation and encourage staff participation in extracurricular activities and events as appropriate. "Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School will, to the extent feasible and appropriate, coordinate and integrate Title I parent involvement programs and activities with other federal, state and local programs and conduct other activities that encourage and support parents in more fully participating in the education of their children. The school agrees to take the following actions to coordinate and integrate parent involvement programs. Kindergarten screening, during which parents are invited to participate and receive information about how to help support their child for readiness. Kindergarten welcome session event, winter activities. The HART Awards celebrate the success of students. The principal addresses parents with a brief explanation of the event. Parents are invited to come into the school to participate in that event, in those events. And those happen monthly. Parent-teacher conferences are held November and March of each year. Um, a variety of meeting times are offered in order to accommodate parent and family needs. There are in-person and virtual options and childcare can be provided if that is a need. "Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School agrees to take the following actions to ensure that information related to the school and parent programs, meetings and other activities is sent to the parents of participating children in a format and to the extent practicable and practicable in a language the parents can understand. This is a repeat of that, of that slide that talked about this, to offer translation services prior to the event for parents of ELL students and to provide parents with written information in their chosen language before, during and after the event. A parent requiring that usually would let, um, the, their child's homeroom teacher, you would probably know that ahead of time if that was, um, a request. "Per ESSA, Heartland Elementary School agrees to take the following actions to provide other reasonable support for parent involvement activities. As parents may request, ongoing communication with parent-teacher organization with building principal. Parent requests are welcome to the administrator and school board members. The school, in consultation with parents and family members, may include additional programs and activities designed to build capacity for parents and family involve, involvement in Title I schools in order to improve student achievement. These discretionary activities are listed under Section 1116 of ESSA. If the Title I school elects to incorporate these activities, will be listed here and we can add those to the, um, procedures with specific descriptions about implementation. So finally, what will be the next steps? Um, we will share this out. Um, and then the, whatever the procedure is, and I don't know what the, the procedure adoption. Um, uh, procedure, adoption, procedure is, like, how do we, what's the protocol for that? I am going to be putting this on the website and I would like at least two weeks to offer, uh, people the opportunity to view it and, uh, ask questions on the comment form. So, uh, so the administration, okay. And then, then it will be attached to the parent-family engagement policy, which I will talk to us in a second about. So then the approval, um, this is what we would do. The school parent and family engagement procedure has been developed jointly with and agreed up, agreed on with parents of children participating in Title I Part A programs. We rely a lot on school board, um, on school board, these school board meetings to provide communication to our community. Uh, we also rely on our school members, our school board members who have parents, who have parents, who have children in our school and represent the parents in our community and have the best interests of our students at heart. So I think that's the final, um, slide there. What I wanted to tell you is that through this monitoring process, we have discovered that the recent parent and family engagement policy that the SU school board reviewed January, February, March, I think, and recently adopted was the wrong format. So we will be bringing back another version of the policy to the board, um, for consideration. Um, the, it was in the wrong format. Yes. So I, my apologies. Of course you do. It's so exciting. So, um, and that would conclude my presentation. I really apologize about the mix-up earlier. I'll check to see what happened. Make sure it's accurate. And I will stop sharing my screen. It was a lot. There's a lot of information in that plan and that's why probably to take a look at it, but to be able to hear it is also helpful for our parents to be able to engage in what the plan says. Thank you, Sharice.
Hey Nikki, we can't hear you anymore.
You muted, okay.
I muted both.
Okay.
I can hear you about that. Thank you.
We just muted everybody in the room. So. So we finished, um, we already did the, we're moving on to items for action and we discussed the hiring and resignations in the, um, administrative report. So we can move right on to the items for action. Um, and I neglected to write down the names of the resignations. Oh, great. Okay. So, um, we will vote to accept the resignations of McKenna Wilkinson, Michael Botts, Rebecca Towne and Emily Fugay with regrets, with like serious regrets. Um, those are some pretty important people in our community. And we're going to be bummed without you. Um, so I'll take a motion. Or you, somebody can.
You want these as, are these going to be separate motions?
Okay. And a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so Beth moves and Heather seconds. Is there any further discussion? Uh, okay. Um, so all those in favor, oh, we're going to do a roll call. Okay. All those in favor of accepting the resignations regretfully, um, please say aye. Beth?
Aye.
Heather? Colleen?
Aye.
Aye.
She mouthed it. I don't know why we can't hear her.
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye. Why can I not hear them?
Do I need? Oh, oh.
Turn your sound up.
Okay. Hi, Colleen. Okay, um, I'm going to read lips and say that you guys said aye. Um, I can't hear you. So those resignations have been accepted. Um, and then we have, uh, three new hires, um, to move. So, um, the motion would be, I would move to, um, hire Abigail Barafa, Elizabeth Dow and Alina Martez, um, into our school. If they want to move.
So moved.
Okay, Colleen moves. Second? So second. Beth seconds. Okay. Um, any further discussion? So that filled two of four positions?
There's some, yeah, there's some that are in the wings, just were not quite at the point of board approval.
Okay. But that's nice. It works two of four. Okay. Okay. Um, so we'll go to a roll call. If you're in favor, please say aye. Heather?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Awesome. Okay, I heard you guys this time. Okay, so that, oh, Nikki, aye. I always forget to roll call myself. Okay. Um, yay. Oh, it's official. All the Daphinos have fallen into place now. We have a full administration. And Alina's celebrating quietly in the corner. Very quietly, actually. Oh, did you bring special treats last week that I missed out on last month? Okay. Okay. Because it was worth it. Because they were that good. Okay. Okay, I'm moving on to. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You have to make them this year because I missed it.
Oh, right. You were COVID.
You were COVID.
You were COVID.
With a new puppy.
So hiring does look good.
Awesome.
Larry and Tina are putting on the job fair on May 13th for the SU, so if you know anybody that...
Cool. Okay. We're supposed to discuss the retreat date under items for action, and I'm going to do that as part of setting the next agenda. Yeah, because you were late. You missed the changes and additions to the agenda.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, so for setting the next agenda, we have two agendas to set. We have a June meeting, which, what day is that? We need to slow down a little bit. June 6th, okay. Okay, so we have a meeting on June 6th. And we also have a potential retreat.
Have we decided the retreat? Is that something we have to do at this exact moment?
No. We can, I mean, we can throw out some dates and solidify it later. So the question is, is do we want a June meeting, or do we want a...
A retreat.
We just want a retreat?
I was going to propose that we have the retreat June 6th. It's already on the calendar.
Dude, I can do that.
That sounds pretty good.
Well, we have to, oh, question about previous, so we know that you were hiring for a few positions. What if we don't have said board meeting, like we have a retreat on June 6th, how are we hiring?
We just usually authorize the superintendent to hire.
Can we make sure we do that tonight so that we, if you guys, can we do that?
What, to give them authorization right now?
We can do it now or on June 6th.
We can do it at the retreat.
She can bring names.
Oh, we can do it after the retreat. Okay.
We can bring names to the retreat. Yeah, no. We can do that at the retreat. Okay, so the only thing that we talked about, the item I have for the next agenda is to bring the MRA data. Well, so do we want to move that to another, the next meeting, or, and focus on the equity audit? Like, how much time do you...
You could, and the thing about the MRA data is, I mean, the Lighthouse team looks at that data, that's why we made that survey, and set goals here based on that data.
Okay.
And they're going to come together in August, right, Angie?
Yes.
August, May, the nights, very appropriate in August or September.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Can you guys just tell me what, how long the retreat is? Like, what's the structure of the retreat?
Oh, the retreat is fun, Hannah. The retreat is, so, so everything is public, but the retreat is really more of a chance for the board to kick back and relax. We often make very few big decisions, and it's often a time of learning for the board. And it's also, by design, a chance for us, because we get new board members in March, it's a chance for us to get to know the new board member in a less formal environment, and for us to all reconnect with each other in a less formal environment, so.
Also, Alina makes really good treats.
Yeah.
We're still going to keep talking. It's a potluck.
So I don't know if you can hear Heather, but Alina makes really good treats. So we do it, we've, we've done it as a, actually, as long as I've been on the board, it's been a potluck at the board chair's house where we relax and chill out. It usually starts earlier than six o'clock. Was it usually five?
Yeah, you can start with dinner at five.
Yeah, so we have dinner at five, and then we kind of hang out together until nine-ish.
Great. Sounds great. I had like slight nervousness, this was a weekend thing, and we just, you guys may know, they just built a big new building at Dartmouth, so I'm just working a lot of weekends this summer. Trying to find a weekend day that I was not on call.
Yeah, no, it's not a weekend. It's just a...
And then I thought the exact same thing. I thought it was a sleepover.
Yeah.
Super excited.
Yeah.
And then it was a slight letdown that there was no sleepover party.
No sleepover party. We're all too busy. So hopefully, hopefully you are not working that night. Is that, I don't, okay.
Yeah, June 6th works, yep.
Yeah, I was checking lacrosse schedules. It looks good for me. Yeah. I mean, my house is still there, no matter what. So, okay, so, okay, so we're going to forego the June official meeting and just schedule a retreat, and we're going to talk about the equity audit, and we'll talk about the MRA data at the following board member.
Or September, probably.
Yeah, okay. September.
And hiring approval.
Yeah. Yeah, and then if we have to do hiring.
Is it okay that offers someone a job, like it's E, that the board doesn't approve it until sometime in June?
Okay. They tell people that's the official, that as an official?
Yeah.
Yes, but it's, they have the job.
Yeah, yeah. In the situation we're in, where we trust our administrators.
It's fine. I just want to make sure that like, someone doesn't feel as if you hired them, but they can't get to be official until then. I would want them to like go to somewhere else where they can officially hire sooner.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fun.
Sharice did a question on line, just is that number of employees a normal turnover?
Kind of feels normal, but...
In the past few years?
Yeah, it's, I feel like that's been normal the whole time I've been on the board. I feel like there's been...
This time of year, I mean, part of it is, this is just...
I'm looking at you, because you've been here a lot longer than me. It feels like a lot.
It depends what years you're carrying it.
Yeah.
As years have gone on, it seems like turnover is more and more and more.
Yeah.
It's not just here.
It's not just, no, it's not just here. Yeah. Oh my gosh, that was depressing. Yeah, I, but I also feel like, you know, three is not an unusual number, and we're a little higher at four this year. Hopefully, we're done.
Contracts needed to be signed by Sunday, so it's not this time of year where you see that.
Yeah, exactly.
Just make that choice whether to sign that contract.
But we should be in good shape.
And we're not having, Sharice has followed up with, is there a common, like resignation reason that anyone's sharing?
No.
Some people are moving, some people are leaving the profession, you know, some people are going to higher paid jobs. That's not typical responses from the staff.
I think the leaving of the profession is the new reason that...
Yeah. Since COVID.
Okay, so I think that that is a good retreat.
Equity audit, hiring, and the hiring approval are needed. Do you usually set goals, board goals for the year? Do you want to work on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we'll review the radar list. Yeah, and, which I think ties in well with the equity audit, and I, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So then, I think we normally have an inventory. Then I won't have a formal inventory of the board, but assuming there are hiring appointments, then I could have a couple slides of those, just where I can write them down to one place.
Yeah, yeah. That works well.
I can happily do that.
I'm super excited.
I know. Yeah, yeah, we could do a playground update. But we'd probably forego a presentation by the company unless they want to be in my living room. Okay, so we'll work with Lori to set that up. I forget how we did it before.
Yeah, I think Sharice said that was a beautiful, he's bringing one of the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, so we set the next agenda, and then I am going to say that we should have an executive session to bring the board up to speed on the student matter. They're somewhat up to speed, but not entirely, so. And we need a vote to go into executive session on the student matter. So anybody make a motion? Okay. Heather makes the motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Hannah. Okay. All those in favor of moving into executive session? Beth?
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Okay, and Nikki, aye. We will move into executive session at 7:07.